Okay, seven oh five P M, March twenty seventh, two thousand twenty four. Welcome everybody back from last year. Open the public hearing meeting first stand for the budget of allegiance. First on our agenda tonight is to close out the public hearing on the Thomas Green subdivision. His application has been withdrawn. Just checking, is there anybody here from the Thomas Green subdivision? Okay. So I would like a motion, make a motion to close the public hearing.
Go for both?
Yes, please.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, yes. John?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Hearing none on that one, Jared?
Also, not on the agenda, but I'm just gonna bring it up anyway. We still have an open public hearing for Evergreen Estates if there's anybody here for that. Okay, we'll proceed to uh the site plan review for Lake Zorn Music Center. Guys can step up.
Good evening.
Sorry, is there a chair there?
Thank you for the opportunity to come, come before you tonight. For those of you that don't know who I am, I'm Mike Conway, and I currently have the pleasure of serving as chairman of the music center. Some of you might recall that about five years ago, um, we developed a plan to redo the campus. Uh, that plan um was fairly extensive in that all water, electrical, and septic was completely redone. We also put on that property, um, twelve uh buildings for the kids that attend the camp, and another eighteen uh for faculty and staff, as well as two buildings um for um uh our healthcare center and also our administration. When we submitted that plan several years ago to you, it had a couple of phases. And we're now, we've completed the first phase, so everything I just said was completely done. That second phase um was involved with a couple of things. One was the current um dining hall, which, believe it or not, dates back well before nineteen fifty. Um, and as part of uh the ongoing renovation of the camp, that building has got to be sold for um uh better things. Um, the kitchen serves approximately a hundred and fifty people a day. Um, all of the septic, electrical, and um uh water has been hooked into the new system that exists. So our application tonight, um, and the purpose of tonight is to ask for you to take a look at this submission for a revision of the dining hall and the maintenance building next to it. The maintenance building currently contains uh dry storage and cold storage. Those two entities are gonna be moved into the new dining hall, uh rather than our chefs and assistants tracing across muddy uh soil to go get things and bring them into the kitchen. Um, we as part of all this process and to make it happen, we've applied to New York State for a grant. Um, that grant is part of the NISC process. Um, and we submitted that about a month and a half or so ago on time uh for one half the cost of this project, which is the maximum funding that they have. That was an application for one point two million. Um, and as part of that, we had to come up with commitments equal to the other half of one point two million, which we've done. So we're now waiting to hear from New York State, um, which we're told will come in April sometime. Um, let's, let's hope that happens, because if it doesn't, everything you have in front of you is gonna have to be retooled, I think, or certainly take a step back and see how we can continue to, to fund this thing. So with that, um, I'm hopeful that tonight with the submission of the materials in front of you, that you'll have a chance to look at those and give us your um concerns. We may address those if any. Uh, and uh we look for the possibility of an approval from you so that when these funds are made available, uh that we can get started. We anticipate getting started sometime in the fall. As part of tonight's presentation, uh I wanted to bring a couple of people who've been responsible for all of the materials that are in front of you um and can answer any questions uh and concerns that you might have. So with that, Jer?
Thank you, thank you, Mike. Uh, my name is Jared Katic. I'm a landscape architect with the firm E D R. We were formerly Alon. Um, Alon was uh instrumental in the first round of improvements to master plan. So we know the, the, the project pretty intimately, especially the utilities and, and the site conditions that, that prevail on the, on the site. Uh, with me, we also have a Finney Design Group, and we have Brennan, Brennan Drake and Emily McDougall, uh responsible for the building design. So I'll, I'll be handling the site work and uh folks from Finney Design Group will be handling the building. Okay, we have advanced the um uh the project to the point where it fulfilled the requirements of the grant application. And that's somewhat where we're, where we're holding off until, as Mike said, we hear back uh with, with bated breath on um on receipt of, of the grant. Okay, so in the submission package, I, I, I will also say that it's been determined that this project uh has, you know, through the town, dialogue with the town, that the um Adirondack Park Agency for jurisdictional inquiry is not being deemed necessary as the one that was completed for the two thousand fifteen starter project master plan in that first phase of development uh suffices. And this project was covered in that, as was the uh need for another round of a CICA review. Okay, so we're moving beyond that. Those of you that were very glad to hear that, um. Yeah, but as Mike said, this is somewhat of a replacement in kind of the existing buildings. The um dining hall, the proposed dining hall will be in the location of the existing dining hall uh with a similar footprint, and we'll have uh Finney Design Group folks talk about that in some detail. And then also likewise, the uh storage building, uh maintenance storage building will be within the, 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 the footprint that's proposed throughout building is about the same size and will be in essentially the same location, but perhaps I turned a little bit to better configure a, a campus quadrigo for the, for the camp itself. So what I'd like to do now is um uh go through the drawings that we've done. And as, as I said, these are, are drawings that we've developed for the grant application. We carried them a bit further respective of the uh utilities. Um, Mike said, as Mike relayed, that the entire utility system from the, you know, the sanitary, the water, and the electrical was, has been redone and upgraded. In that planning for that, the anticipation of these buildings uh was, was considered in there, so the current system, especially the sanitary, uh, you know, can handle the uh, the proposed development. So really good. We have our engineer Wade Newman on that, and uh so he's, if we need to provide letter of verification, we'll gladly do that. That it's uh, the, the system can accommodate the proposed use. Okay? Looking to dot all our eyes on this one. Not that we haven't before. Uh, okay, so yeah, we have a cover sheet. I'm gonna, I'm, I'll go through some of the, the generic ones somewhat quickly. The uh, that second page uh has the uh essentially, there's the, the dining hall, uh there's a, where the note says Lake Tour Road. There's a note there and there's like a um dashed in box. That, for this project, that essentially is the area of disturbance and development that, that we're proposing for here. Uh, so you can see it's, it's a pretty confined area. Once again, as Mike said, we have the utilities that go in immediately in front of the proposed building, so that connection uh is a kind of a short, short work effort, we like to think. We are not proposing any disturbance of the wooded embankment on the backside that goes down to the, to the stream. Um, okay, so that will remain undisturbed uh as, as it stands right now, as the tree stand right now. Okay? The next page is C one oh, one oh one. Um. So this looks at the, the, the uh two buildings that have the color applied are the proposed buildings, and there's an enlargement to the right. So once again, it's in the same locations as the existing buildings. And when I say same, you know, there's, there's a little bit, you know, the building's gotten a little bit bigger, but uh I would say probably ninety percent of the buildings cover the existing footprint locations. And you can see on the, the enlargement on the upper right there, that the, the site work is limited to um providing walkways, paved walkways uh at the access points to the building, and that the uh utilities that we need respective of the grease traps and sanitary and all that are already installed based on the previous work. So. And you know, we'll be installing temporary erosion control to ensure that we don't have erosion uh down the undisturbed wooded slope to the uh, to the northeast. And uh the walkways that, that the, the camp loop walkway will remain as is with a slight adjustment to accommodate work that's going to occur at the front of the building. We are going to uh propose that uh, uh, we'll, we'll hear about the building design, it's a shed roof design. So the water will be coming to the, to the front. And uh, as it comes off the front, we'll be infiltrating it back into the ground, into the immediate area. So we're, we don't have, uh, there's not a great need. We will not be required to do a swift storm, uh stormwater prevention pollution plan because of the disturbance is under one acre. But we will do erosion and sedimentation control that will handle that. And the idea here is any good uh practices is to get that water infiltrated right into the uh into the site as quickly as we can. We know that we have highly permeable soils up there. Very highly permeable soils, because when we put the septic leach field in, that we had to actually slow the water down and put in a clay liner. So you just can't win. Going too fast or too slow. So in this case, it's, it's to our benefit. Okay? And uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but this will be a, a kind of slab on grade with full foundation. Yeah, so no, no basement structures in here. All right, so there's, that's, that's C one oh one. Uh, this one is um there's engineers in a room, they'll, they'll like this one. This is the utility plant. Uh, essentially, we, what we wanted to pick here is that we have all the utilities that we need in the immediate area. And as I mentioned before, they're all, uh, they're all current and upgraded. So we're uh, we've done a work on that one in anticipation of this project coming online at some point. So um, we'll take advantage of those previous efforts that we've done at the camp. So that's what three oh one is about. And then we have the um, we're getting into the building. Uh, it's, it's, I think it's, it's a, it's a grand building. Uh, the committee uh spent a lot of time working on it. We're going to turn it over to, to Brennan, if we go through it. Would? Use yours?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Brennan Drake, one of the principal architects at Finney Design Group. Uh, thank you for your time tonight. So this is kind of a dream project for an architect, getting to design a cool space for performance for kids. So we're very excited to be involved with this project. Um, starting on page oh one, floor plans. So from the left to right, on the left, we have some storage, which will act as seating, storage, or table storage, and the required restrooms and camp store. The center mass is really the main performance slash dining space. Um, and as we'll see, as we get a little bit further along in the packet, uh, we have a glass wall that's overlooking the ravine. So we have a kind of natural backdrop to the performances that are happening. And then to the right is the kitchen, which is roughly the same footprint or in the same footprint as the existing building. Uh, so moving on to page oh two. We broke up the building into three masses, so it is a one-story building with slab on grade, as Jared mentioned, but we did change the roof line on the two wings to help break up the length of it. Uh, the center portion, which is the performance space, is the higher one, and uh we are providing a reverse shed roof at the two entries to prevent water from hitting people as they walk in. And we are planning for a potential future solar array on the roof, so potentially down the road, this building could be off the grid. Eight oh three are the elevations. You can see further, this, the roofs and how they're broken up into the three different masses. Um, we are using as many local materials as we can, and timber. Uh, we're trying to have almost an Adirondack modern feel for the structure. And we have a call out on the top right of all those materials, but we're using natural tones um that also tie into the other structures that are on site. Uh, so then, next page, oh four. Perspective from ravine. So the center mass, you can see here, we're using timber to support our large timber rafters. This is a mass timber style building. Um, and we're going to have glass from column to column to create that dramatic effect behind performances. And then here, you can also see that kind of natural Adirondack tones that we're, we're keeping for the building. Um, and then if you turn one more page to oh five, so this is the view from the camp side. The last view, you, you, no one will ever really see that because it's from the ravine, but more to give the idea of that glass wall. Um, but then this side is the primary elevation that you'll see while on site. Um, we're giving attention to the two entrances with two shed roofs and columns with timber and stone, and then kind of keeping the wings to the left and right subtle and more recessive. Yeah. Yeah, so maybe if we go back to page oh one for a second. The layout that we included as part of this presentation um is that more for the performance space. Um, so we're showing approximately a hundred seats. Um, the idea is that this space is large enough that when the performance isn't going on, you'd be able to roll out tables to have seating for a hundred to eat as well. And so the space, the proportions of that are ideal for the performance and for the dining space as needed.
Questions from the public?
You didn't include, other than the footprint of that maintenance building, you didn't include any drawings, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, just make sure that you understand that they're in front of you for both those buildings in this uh site plan review tonight, not just the dining hall, dining concert hall, but also that maintenance building as well.
Some of the character and public of the maintenance building?
Yeah. I think it's up there. Apparently, uh, you got mentioned earlier, there's dry storage and cold storage in that building. Uh, and then behind that is better part of eighty-five years' worth of stuff they put away in that shed. Um, and it's been cleaned up and that sort of thing, but basically a tool shed, right? That sort of thing, saws, uh, stuff that our maintenance individuals use to, just to take care of the campus. There's no, we're not anticipating increasing the size of this building, do anything uh other than maybe to back a lawnmower into it. Um, but that's about the same construction in terms of wood uh to blend in with everything else.
Similar character to the, the music center?
Yeah.
Is there gonna be utility connections to it?
There is now, uh, and having continued. Um. Well, I don't know that we talked about a bathroom in there, but I think we I don't think we anticipate putting a bathroom in there because there's a bunch right next door. But there is um water to that building, and there is electricity to that building under the current situation. Other questions at all?
One thought, as I'm looking at the, the diagrams here, you know, I just wanted to mention that for anybody who hasn't been to the music camp at all in July and August, make a point of going. It's incredible, the talent that is there and what this music camp brings to the Southern Adirondacks. Um, one concern is, as I look at the, at the diagrams, and I guess maybe this is a landscape question. These lawns are perfectly green and manicured, and you know how close we are to the lake. So what kind of uh what are you doing to make certain that whatever it is you have to do to get those green lawns isn't gonna be going into the lake?
Uh, Howard, it's a great, great question. Uh, I think I can answer it, Jared, jump in if I say something wrong. But the uh as you may know, um there's about three hundred feet of sand underneath that plateau.
Yeah.
And the lake is approximately three hundred feet down there. The next door neighbor is on the lake as well as two hundred and seventy some ocks east to down, right next to the lake. So in terms of water table and that sort of stuff, what we're looking at is sand plateau. We've had a hydro cedar come in, and for the first two weeks, it looked fine, and then it just burned down.
Oh.
So for the most part, um, it's very tough to grow anything there, other than it seems to do really well down to the back of the building. But in terms of the runoff, it's um we've never had anything going down banks, we've never had anything going down in front of the lake.
Yeah.
The actual buildings that are closest to the lake are about two hundred and, or three hundred feet up above the lake, and that's a hill that goes down like this, and basically nothing comes off of that.
Yeah, makes sense. Thank you.
Absolutely. All of me apologize for the artist, artist license on me.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that. There's a, we took a little bit of artistic liberty on what the grass looks like.
I figured that.
Correct me, but I, I don't think that there's fertilizer being used uh of the turf grass right now.
Uh huh.
We've got, just by way of background, the campers that come to us, young musicians, um we have about a hundred kids, maybe, let's call it eighty kids per session. In the little kid section, we have four weeks, in the big kid section, we have four weeks. Little kid section, seventy to eighty kids come, they can cover one week, two weeks, three weeks, four weeks, and the big kids will all come for all four weeks. They're all there. These kids, a third of them come from the United States, uh, come from the Northeast, a third from the United States, and a third from seventeen different countries around the world. Um, they have to audition to get in, uh, and there's a it's pretty rigorous. Uh, they spend, believe it or not, all day uh playing music. They do get down to the lake, swim in the boat, and that kind of stuff. You don't want to see him play softball against the Philadelphia Orchestra. We're gonna have to do something about this year, or like, how do you throw a ball? How do you catch a ball? Now catch it like this? So um, that's kind of a background of what goes on. Other questions at all? None?
I, but I'm just gonna make a comment. I, I, if that's the way the building is gonna look, I think it's, it looks great. The area, you guys did a good job.
Thanks. All these guys, plus Elizabeth, you haven't met Elizabeth, Pitcarin. She has a strong will, she likes things. And let's remember too, that this thing is I'm gonna say eighty-five percent of the time, it's gonna be a dining hall. That's what it's, and it's the other fifteen percent, and maybe some small performances in there. So this is not our main performance area. We've got two other buildings at those things.
This is, this is just for like the kids that are there, to perform in front of themselves.
Yep, and maybe we have some small fundraiser, John, or something along that lines, where we invite in twenty-five or fifty of our favorite people and uh put on a performance for the kids in the factory.
Is the stage area lifted at all, or is it the same level as the?
It's all the same level.
All right?
Okay. Okay. Um. Um, does anybody maintain anything in there during the winter time?
Maintain, you mean?
Go in and check it.
Yes.
The roof is very flat. So if we, we haven't gotten much snow in past years, but if we get a lot of snow, they're very flat.
Full-time maintenance person.
Okay.
All the roofs around the campus are metal roofs, so that snow comes off, we done quickly, this begins to warm up.
And this is also a metal roof?
Yes.
Yeah, this one's EPDM.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah, it's, it's EPDM, so it's like a, a membrane. Um, so it is a one-on-twelve uh roof slope. So with that, it will allow for natural drainage. There's no parapet or anything that would prevent it. And the other nice thing about EPDM, it's actually snow melt slowly off of it, so there isn't a big dump onto, you know, kind of the roadway there.
And the front was um one-on-one, it wasn't one-on-twelve. That was what it's on. There were different slopes between the both of them.
Yeah, so the
The front or south, right?
Yeah, so the shallowest slope we have is one-on-twelve.
Okay.
And then a one-and-a-half-on-twelve, two-on-twelve. Um, so this is a, an approach that we've done on quite a few of our, um, Adirondack houses, not as much for dining or concert halls. Um, but this, this roof actually performs really well because the snow is able to build up on it and melt off nicely.
Okay.
What's the life cycle of the EP, what was it?
EPDM.
EPDM, what's the longevity wise?
Typically comes with a twenty-to-thirty-year warranty.
And it's also, it's just like perfectly smooth membrane?
Uh, depending on who installs it, yeah. Um, but generally, there will be some seams that you'll see, but um with as shallow as the slope is, um, for instance, if you go to page five, um, you see a little bit of the roof, but you're primarily, your eyes are being drawn towards those two entrances, and that was very intentional.
That's beautiful.
Well, thank you. Let's, let's hope we can get it done.
I think.
Nothing would make us happy. I think the next thing after this is to try to figure out what to do with the beach property. Each house is down there. Hundred and twelve. That's a long ways out.
So you're waiting on the state or the?
Waiting on the state, John, and we're told April. Uh, I don't know what that means. Um, I don't know if the governor's budget uh has to clear everything first before that's awarded. I think the funds are already there, it's a question of decision making. So we'll see. Need to wait April.
Who was the grantor? Who would the, who did you apply to?
NISC. Pretty sure it was NISC, yeah.
Okay.
I'll find out, Howard.
Yeah, I'd be interested.
I know originally, we met small group real quick before we had this. You talked about setting up construction workers and everything.
Exactly.
Uh, the sooner the better, because everybody's almost booked for the end of the year.
Yeah, between how busy everyone is, and then also just the tight turnaround for this building. We don't, we're, we're basically building in the winter, since we have to have it ready for s- spring next year.
Right.
So we need to break ground as soon as possible to meet that deadline.
The kids are, things usually wrap up on the campus probably late August, before Labor Day, uh, a week or two before Labor Day. So if we can clear everybody out, get started on that. And then camp opens first part of June.
So you can't really start planning until you actually know you're getting that money. Correct?
Well, I hope, talking to some people, to line them up on some of this.
No, I know you're pressed for, for getting things planned because of the fact that everybody's booking up.
Yep.
That, that's
We ultimately need to take this to a full construction document level um and get permits from Warren County, and then obviously your guys' approval as well. You know, so we still have a long road before it's a real building that we can even put on the street. Avoid it.
Has there been plans developed for the maintenance building, or is that?
No.
Okay.
Not yet.
Right now, it's just the rectangle on.
Right. And I don't see becoming anything other than that. It's simpler the better. Other questions? Hearing none?
Okay.
Um, we'll step aside.
That's what I'll think tomorrow soon.
So. When we were going through this
Thank you.
I know back in uh two thousand fifteen, when they presented everything, we had a public hearing. They actually showed off three phases. They actually showed off three phases. They actually have what it was gonna look like back then for phase three. Um, I notice we have to go through each thing, but, um, it says seeker review for phase one, two, and three. Now, didn't we do that?
Yes, I, that is in our, in the file, um, that I have. And the seeker was for phase one, two, and three. You, you were the lead agency. I have minutes from the meeting where the, um, a negative declaration was made, and I have paperwork back from DEC where they recognized that it was distributed as it was supposed to be. So the seeker is all set. Also, in the file, it, I, in the file that I have is the APA non-jurisdictional letter, and that was for phase one, two, and three as well, which is why I'm not making them redo any of that, because it's already, was already approved back in
I guess, I guess we get down to number six, which is a question for Mary. Originally, we had a public hearing for the whole thing. Phase one, two, and three, because I was on the board back then. What does this necessitate a public hearing for this? To, one of the items here is to call for a public hearing on?
Um, so it's the board's decision whether or not you wanna have a public hearing on a site plan review, but just keep in mind not that you're going to, can't deny it if you don't have a public hearing.
Right. I know that question was brought up before. It's like, I, uh, wondered if
God, memory serves me, we had this discussion, and as I recall, it was, I think it was a quasi-public hearing.
Well, we did have one, yes.
No one came or showed up.
No one showed up, you're right. We're down to basically that, as far as this whole application of that and approving it, that everything else has been done, other than the public hearing.
Yeah, it's the board's decision. If the board doesn't think it's necessary, then
You, you should go through the application and just make sure you feel that the application is correct. And then it's whether or not you wanna have a public hearing.
Karen, do we have to take in consideration the solar power in the future?
No.
Nothing to do with us?
No, um, I issue a permit on it, but um, it's nothing, I mean, it's just part of your review here.
Okay.
But they, but they don't have, it doesn't call for any special action.
Okay. Because it was on, no one did on the plan.
Okay, so I'll proceed to go. I'm sure everybody has their paperwork. It's right after the front page. With first the authorization form, which states that Elizabeth Pitkarin was the owner of the premises, Lake Tor Road. Um, proposed dining hall and storage building to be built at grounds of the Luzern Music Center. And this was March twentieth. Uh, now the next page is the site plan review application. Uh, it's dated March eighteenth. Name information, uh, Lake Tor Road. Owner name is Blue Lacoon LLC. Luzern Music Center, gives the address, telephone numbers, and email. First question was, does this require a special use permit for the zoning ordinance? It said no. Next, the total site area square footage. Total site was seventeen point seven acres. Project area is point four acres. Existing zone of the site, residential rural. Anticipated construction time sixteen months. Um, it's gonna be one phase. Approximately eight million dollars, or is that three, I'm sorry, three million. It looked like an eight, right? Eight million, that'd be uh, and the description is removal of existing dining hall and maintenance barn, construction of a dining music hall and a separate maintenance building, water, sanitary sewer, and electrical services currently at the camp where in two thousand and twenty-one and have the capacity to service the proposed project. Present use is a summer youth music camp. Number three, Luzern is a jolly, that's adjacent to the site's west boundary. Um, residential
Uses.
Uses are
Located.
Located at the so
That's just my handle.
Okay. I mean, I'm usually pretty good at reprinting, but all right, uh, list number four, town of, uh, Luzern site from review, status in progress. Warren County building permit status pending site review. Permitted use under zoning regulations.
I have a question right here. Have you been in touch with DOH on this? Not yet. You know that you will have to, though. Yeah, okay. Okay.
Karen, is Tom McKinney still there or is he dead?
No, Tom McKinney is still there, but not for a lot longer, so.
Continuing as a proposed action, permitted use and the zoning regulations, yes. Consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan, yes. Uh, proposed action consistent with the predominant character of the existing existing built for natural landscape, yes. Is the site of the proposed action located in state listed critical environment area, no. And they have submitted their check as per the bottom notation. Next page, will the proposed action result in a substantial increase in traffic above present levels? No. Are public transportations available or near the site of the proposed action? No. Are any pedestrian accommodations or bicycle routes available on near site of proposed action? No. Does the proposed action meet or exceed the state energy code requirements? Yes. Says building components for increased insulation and seasonal use of building. Yes. Um, so it exceeds the state energy code requirements. I haven't come across this question. What does that exactly mean as far as the board's concerned? Mary?
It's, it's more a building code question, and I, with everyone trying to go as green as possible, they wanna make sure that you're, you know, doing your best to conserve energy type stuff, so.
Right, so I think it's a good thing if it's meaning or exceeding.
Okay.
Bad things. Like the state steps, the bar, the bare minimum that has to be met, and this is exceeding that, so.
That's good. I just, I never saw across that question before. Will the proposed action connect to an existing public private water supply? Yes.
Yeah.
Um, will the proposed action connect to existing wastewater utilities? Well, we don't have it, so it'd be no, correct? Because you have your own septic system.
Well, that's what he's saying, that they're gonna connect to
Oh, I see. Well, I guess I read it as a utility being that we, the town of Lake Luzern has one, but
No, it's, it's what is on the property already.
Does the site contain a structure that is listed on either the state or national register? No. Is the proposed action located in archaeological sensitive area? Yes. Does any portion of the site of proposed action or lands joining the proposed action contain wetlands? Yes. Would the proposed action physically clear or encroach into any existing wetland or water body? No. Fourteen, identify the typical habitat types that occur on or likely be found in the project site. Check all that apply. Which they check. Wouldn't wetland also be checked? Because you said we already have wetlands.
Well, it's on the parcel, but it's not where the project site is, the wetland.
Okay.
So that's probably why they didn't check it.
Okay. Uh, shoreline forest, suburban, early mid succession.
Is shoreline on the project site as well? I'm sorry. If there's no wetland, that's the case there is shoreline either, that would be it.
That's correct, yes. I mean, where's the shoreline if there's no wetlands? So that shouldn't be checked is one of the things.
On fourteen, they're saying if you check shoreline, should wetland have been checked, or if you didn't check wetland, should shoreline not be checked? Because the project site, are you talking of the project site just being the area that you're working on right now, or the whole parcel? That's
That's always really news.
So they should probably check the wetland then. Are you all right with them doing that?
Yeah. Does the site of proposed action contain any species of animal or associated habitats listed by the state or federal government as threatened or endangered? No. Is the project site located in the one-hundred-year flood plain? No. Will the proposed action create stormwater discharge either from the point or non-point sources? No. Will stormwater discharges flow to adjacent properties? No. Will stormwater discharges be directed to establish conveyance systems runoff and storm drains? Yes. And you described it as proposed buildings are designed with shed roofs, I guess that's what it's called, that will convey stormwater runoff to adjacent ground infiltration areas. Does the proposed action include construction or other activities that result in impoundment of water or other liquids? No. The last page, as the site of the proposed action or in a joint property, been the location of an active or closed solid waste management facility? No. Has the site of proposed action or in a joint property been the subject of remediation for hazardous waste? No. And that's it.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yes, absolutely.
The check for yes and the archaeologically sensitive areas, what's the nature of that?
That's on the, uh, DEC map. And they don't pinpoint where, where the areas sorry.
That, uh, that's, that comes off the New York State DEC map or identifies, you know, circles and squares map where there are areas of, uh, potential or impacted archaeological sites. And they, they keep it vague like that. Um, but, uh, the, the fact that we've gone through seeker already on that, that would have been a question that would have been addressed during seeker. And this is, obviously, we're back to the whole site, not just the project.
Yeah, and presumably, you know, it's pre-disturbed land, it's just replaced with buildings that are already there, so you don't have any issues.
Right, I mean, in fact, that we're, we're building over the existing footprints
Right.
of them.
Um, and then, uh, my other question that came to me, you said in the beginning that these buildings are, you know, pre-nineteen fifties. Is there any potential concern of, you know, lead or asbestos or anything like that, that needs to be dealt with when you're demolishing them?
Warren County usually, um, looks at that when they're issuing their permit. They will direct them to either have an asbestos study done and/or the, the lead at that point, but Warren County building codes addresses that.
Okay.
Current current dining hall is all tin. Tin roof, tin sides, just stringing something inside. Um, the maintenance building was just a solid wood building. I don't, I don't know what's on the meat of that. Maybe some shingles up there to create, you know, but I don't see any other than hundred years of paint outside of that. Guess what you're you're in.
If we have to have any questions? Well, we've been through everything, down to number six, um, we're calling for a public hearing. Anybody have any ideas or wanna make a motion?
I think in general, it's good practices to allow for a public hearing. I don't know if anybody's gonna come out for it, but I don't think that there's harm in holding it. There's, there's time for it to you know, to give an effect of a better public hearing, the application of change. If it could please sense them.
And you should probably could just call for a vote on it.
Okay, so by a vote, you mean make a motion or?
Yes.
Okay, um.
I mean, you don't have to do it. Warren feels strongly to make a motion either way.
Right.
I also don't think we need a public hearing, so I'll make a motion not to have a public hearing.
So we have a motion not to, and
Okay, roll call vote?
Yes, please.
John?
If you vote yes, you're not having a public
I vote yes.
Hey, Tony?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Mike?
No.
Howard?
Yes.
Got six yeses, one no. The motion to not have a public hearing is carried.
And the last motion is to approve this project. Um, and make a motion that we approve this.
Who had second?
I will.
Seconded by Francis. Roll call vote, John?
Yes.
Hey, John?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Hearing none, the motion's carried.
That's it. You guys are all set. Thank you. Thank you very
Thank you so much for your time.
Board of all.
Once I have this cover sheet filed with the town clerk, I'll scan it in and email it to, I think I have Brandon's. I have not Brandon's, sorry. I have you, I have Jer, Jer's email. I'll send it to you. Uh, did you give me that? Okay. Okay, I'll put it I give this to the assessor too for tax purposes?
Yeah, that sounds
Yes, okay. I'll check with Melissa. Okay?
Yeah.
Next, we have the conservation analysis for Luzern Woods subdivision. Um, hi.
Um, good evening. Brandon Ferguson with Abermel Design Partnership. I'm here tonight representing Luzern Woods LLC. Um, we've been in front of this board before, kind of with a concept a while back, and we've been working with the owners, staff, against, uh, some possible, um, subdivision layouts for this property they own. It's about thirty-three acres, um, located, it's got frontage on Sagamore on Lake Tor Road, and they also own, uh, the land on Camp Track Road that goes down to the lake as well. Um, there's seven current parcels that make up the main thirty-three acres that are kind of in between Sagamore and Lake Tor. And, um, they have access off of Milrose Lane as well. So, as we were going through some subdivision options with them, looking at the best way to develop this, to get them what they need to make this profitable project and also work with this land, um, we started looking through the code, and we started to think a conservation subdivision was, um, the best option for this site. So as you kind of see, we, we did the conservation analysis in this map that I have here, and you guys have in your packets, this kind of shows where the restrictions are on the site. And the main restrictions really, um, slopes. Right, there, there is some steep areas on the site. The soils are great. We did a number of test pits out there, um, to confirm what soil conditions were. Uh, good sand, good pergrate, uh, so there's no concern there. Um, as far as wetland areas, there are two pockets of I guess you'd call them wetlands, however, they don't meet the town definition of wetlands. They're less than acre in size, and they don't, um, they're not tributary to any larger water body. And they don't, um, they're not tributary to any larger water body. Really just a small pockets at the very bottom, they don't meet APA's definition of wetlands either. Um, which I think matches the town's definition. And we actually got a non-jurisdictional from APA, I'll point on this. And then same for Army Corps, Army Corps requires it, if it's, it's gotta have some kind of connection. Um, and these are isolated, they're just at the very bottom. But they are there as well, so there is, that's kind of where we get a little water table at the very bottom of this, of this depressed lot. So, we went through the analysis and um you guys have in front of you. The big thing is slopes on here, so we're trying to limit the impact of those slopes and fit these homes in. And one thing we're looking at is if we can change the lot sizes and setbacks using the conservation subdivision. That allow us to kind of pocket these homes in different areas on the site to have the developable land. Um, and stay off of those steep slopes to the best of our ability. But also allow for a better buffer to the neighbors um around it as well. So we think it's all around, would be beneficial to both town, the neighbors, and the applicants to go with the conservation. But we're here tonight for the analysis um review. So I'll kind of open it back up to you guys, if you got any questions.
Karen, in in the conservation, uh, are there certain parameters as far as the acreage of each property, you know, like? Half acre, acre, I mean, is there, because this is different, it sounds like they want to have different sized lots. Is there?
We looked at this when we had that meeting, so hold on a minute, all right?
Yeah, and the one thing I'll jump in on too on that is that, we're not necessarily looking to reduce the total size of the lot, right? I think it's required twenty thousand, twenty thousand square foot here. So it's not necessarily reducing the size of the lot, it's maybe narrowing up the lot front inch, so we can fit two homes in kind of a tighter area. And a lot of it's reducing that front yard setback to the road itself, so we're gonna have to put in a road um through this subdivision. And we keep the homes closer to all the development stays in a smaller pocket. So I can kind of even show you here. Kind of overlay our once reaching recent concept plan that we have with them. And there's a blue line, I don't know if you can see it on here, this is where we're looking to kind of pocket the development. Right, so by bringing a road in off of Milrose, extending it through and then. Bringing and pocketing homes within those developable lands, that allows us to conserve a lot of these deep slope areas. That um, you know, have, they're treed right now as well, those deep slopes, so removing the trees to build and expand these lots. And um, would it be beneficial and including them in the lots and not protected lands? Could, you know, if somebody sells the home, then they could disturb it as well by doing stuff and cutting trees, so we think this protects the nature and the. The feel of the property while also allowing for development on it.
On page one eighteen of your book, it says lot sizes and conservation subdivisions. The planning board shall determine the appropriate lot sizes in the course of its review. Of a conservation subdivision based upon the criteria established in this section. And the requirements in the New York State Department of Health. Town services and other private water sewage systems may be used to meet the New York State requirements. And it talks about wells and septic can be located in the conservation, in the um. Protected open spaces. Okay, and then we get down to other area and dimensional requirements, um, this is in the surrounding park.
Can we just back up for one second here, and so this, this is a whole new concept of this development?
Yes.
And then are the lots showing?
So, yes, well, this is the conservation analysis, right, so the steps through the. Board with this, this town, and every town has a different kind of criteria. Is that it requires the conservation analysis in which we essentially say. These are the restraints on the land, this is why we want to do a conservation subdivision. Then my understanding is you guys as a board look at it, decide if you think conservation subdivision is appropriate or not. I don't want to speak for Karen, she might be able to spell it better.
So much of the land they can't build on, it's conserved.
Yeah.
They can't build on that part, the land was. Uh, I don't know.
I was just curious.
Plus, I think in conservation, I think they can. Change the lots configuration. As long as it's twenty thousand feet, that's what it sounds like you want to do, right? In other words, have less frontage in some lots and.
A conservation subdivision can, it goes through your planning board. The other one, like the Mount Luzern project that was in front of the town, is actually. Reviewed first by the town board and not, and only comes to you once they've gotten approval to do that. I don't know what it's called, I'm searching for a word.
Permanent open space and conservation subdivision? Oh, oh, um. Yeah, I remember that.
Another P B D.
Yes, planned development. Yes, planned development district is what that was, so it differs, the process differs. And the town board has more say in that. And they don't in this one, this is done purely by the planning board. And the purpose is, is to try to conserve the areas that are on slopes or. Wetlands or whatever, and and to put the buildings in, not in those areas and keep them as natural as possible.
Conform the lots around the land versus.
Right. Yeah, and eventually when they get to doing the individual lots and setbacks and all of that, but that's not done until after. You have approved the concept basically of doing this conservation district. They are allowed leniency, the board can allow them leniency on certain setbacks. Depending upon um, things come into play in it, but but. They are, you can allow them leniency on setbacks and, as he said, like lot widths. The things that you can't allow them leniency on are things like if there are houses on adjoining lands. There are certain things that you can't allow to happen, but that gets done after you've actually, you're just. Doing a concept here, it's, you're not approving individual lots or anything like that tonight, it's just, do they have enough? Yeah, Mary wants to say something.
So I don't know if you guys have your books with you, but basically the process that you have to follow is spelled out on page one fourteen. So right now, it's under the review process, right now we're on step one, which is the conservation analysis. Um, and that's when this board has to make a written report. Which protects certain areas. It says by deed, jurisdiction restrictions. But that's the first part that we're at, and then the second part will be the concept. You can't get there until we do.
We like, are you able to write three four firsts? Because, well, I mean, if we give you the. Well, no, of course you.
Um, yeah, I mean, if you all.
As a board as a whole, most we decide.
Just like you did kind of with the recommendation to the town board, the roads.
Right. I mean, we'd all obviously decide what we want to do as a board and then.
You have to decide, I will write it.
The legal language we presented by somebody.
We have to accept either A, B, or C to afford. What would you?
One fourteen.
Well, you should go down through those steps and make sure that what he's got. Is is showing what they, what you need to be looking at, and then you have to determine. Do you think there's enough reason for this to be done as a conservation? Subdivision.
Which is either A, B, or C, right? So, go to one sixteen.
Did you go to one sixteen?
So that's, one fourteen is the the steps in the process, one sixteen explains this first stuff to you. On the planning board action on conservation analysis. So, what A, B, and C are what we're doing, trying to do tonight. On one sixteen.
No, Tony is just saying though that before you get to the middle part of one fourteen, the number one at the very top. Says in order for this to qualify as a conservation subdivision, it should meet one of these three.
I guess I'm assuming that Karen noted that, and that's why they're here asking for that. Uh, and you as a board monitor, you that?
Has any of you been to the site? Have you any, I know that John has, has anyone else gone and looked at the site? You realize that it's very steep and sloopy? Okay, so when we met with them, uh, before they. When we met with them, John was part of that meeting. Um, we went through that and. At least one of the following conditions shall be found on the lot, the land constraints. Contains significant resources with conservation value, the lot adjoins other land. That when combined with open space on the lot would result in a substantial amount of land. With conservation value, including any portion of the designated trail corridor, regardless of whether or not. The adjoining lots have been protected as open space. C, that there are extraordinary circumstances unique to the lot that demonstrates that conservation subdivision is the most appropriate method of the subdivision. That's the one that we fell on when we did, when we met together, was that C. Because of the lay of the land and the way that it is, it made sense to go this route. So then he had, he prepared. The analysis for you, and now you've got to look at that and then do your report based on that.
So you chose C, that's where I was at, because that's. We weren't part of that.
Right, so, but it. Even if you, with what he said when he did the presentation, it falls to that C. So he's, he's making that case even to you, not just to that pre-meeting that we had, but he did address that. And that was, C was the one that we came up with that made it qualify the most for this. Conservation subdivision.
Would the report be for the uh, the benefit of building consensus, would it be for the town board, would it be?
It's more for file to show that you have done your review of it, that you agree with what he is presenting you. That um, under this analysis, that. He's presented to you, all of these things are giving you argument is why it would not apply, and then you have to say, yes, we looked at this. We we've reviewed all of what they have presented, we agree with his findings or. Or we want to pass this on to um, an engineer or to be reviewed on the town's behalf, that kind of thing. But you have to do that report, that's not up to me, that's something that you as.
This has nothing to do with the town board at all, because it's.
No.
Right, that's right.
This is purely for the, for you and making your decision.
No point yet that they can turn a comment box, they're actually putting in this. All they're doing is asking that it be slightly different.
Which the terrain, if you've been up there, the terrain is definitely not built.
The question I have is, we're not approving as to how many lots will be approved, all we're doing is saying we will allow. At this point, based on this housing in there. Some special treaty.
What you're doing is allowing him to come forward with a concept plan using this.
Okay.
Conservation. Design, allowing him to reduce some of the setbacks and the widths of the lot, that kind of thing. Based on what he's giving you.
Yeah, and I.
It's just allowing him to come back with a concept plan based on that.
Yeah, I think for, I mean, on your point too, a little bit with the number of lots, um, obviously we look at that for them, but. The the town code does have calculations in there for calculating lots, so you take out constrained lands, then you have to take out. Uh, a loss factor for road, stormwater like that, and then you come up with a number and you, or you look at what you can do for conservation. Or what you could do for conventional subdivision, what you could actually fit on there that way, so you can't go above that number. I think there is a density bonus allowed if you are um, allowing for lands to be public use. Which I haven't discussed that with Anthony, I don't think that's something they want to do, but um, you know, right now we're just trying to get to the path where we can do. A conservation subdivision to pocket these homes, not necessarily get a bigger density. Yeah, right now, and and we have done concepts for them, right, we don't have one ready enough to to submit to you, and. This is kind of the first step, and hopefully we'll get that to you soon, if you guys approve this analysis. But yeah, these areas that we're kind of showing on this plan, it's not really part of your packet, but. This is kind of what we're looking at, these, and you, and you see there, even on the maps, you have the white areas, those are the areas that. Are off those steep slopes, because that's our main constraint. On the site, so yeah, there'd be some disturbance of some steep slopes and areas, but we're trying to limit that, one, it's. It's more costly, I think we don't think it adds value to the homes to have a bunch of steep slopes on their property, maybe you have to. Make these bigger lots and set the houses back farther off the road, now you're pushing those houses closer to those steep slopes. Um, because you're trying to keep your road off of them to begin with. You start to push that closer, now your septics have to get closer to steep slopes, everything kind of gets pushed back into these areas that. Are less developable, more costly to develop on, and kind of impact the whole integrity, I guess, of the of the site. Um, and the natural characteristics of it.
Uh, how does your plan incorporate selling water rights?
Selling water rights, in what way? To the lake, as far as access to the lake?
Yeah.
Um, so we haven't gotten that far with them yet, but I know that the idea right now would be there would have an H O A. Um, and then that Home One Association, they also own Camp Track Road down to the lake. Um, they, I don't know how they would work that through their H O A to be able.
So would, would buyer, prospective buyers of the property have access to the lake?
That's the thought process, yeah, so, whether it's a conservation or a standard or a standard subdivision, I think they would still want to do. So try to pursue that avenue, yeah. Yeah, I know on the original concept, we had some duplexes, um, they like the idea that it's just um, one. With the extra area you need for it to kind of fit them in in the limited space, as we feel like. Single family really fits the land better than tries to pick up few duplexes in there. Um, so that's why we've gone just to, just single families, is our, is our thought process right now, yeah. Like I said, we don't have a official concept going yet, but. Yeah, 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 we've kind of got away from that a little bit, we're still working on a few concepts, but I mean, think the first step is, if we can do this conservation subdivision, I really think it. Opens up the, a nicer layout for the site and a nicer concept plan that we would be able to present to you guys.
So. Well, here's something that I'm gonna shoot out there. Since our decision to make analysis of this, um, don't we have the right to have like our own engineers who would look at this?
If you look at page one sixteen in B, with planning board action on conservation analysis. If you look at B, about two thirds of the way through. The planning board may incorporate information provided by, but not limited to, its own research, site visits, consultants. Other qualified experts and agencies or from public comments. So yes, you can bring in. A consultant being, which would be Cedarwood, who we used before.
I think part of. My problem as a board member is we've never had, one of these never dealt with it, it's gonna be a decision we have to make. And I kind of would like an opinion from our own engineer to look at this.
All right, I understand that, that, yeah, and I, you know, I just make the point too as well that. Moving forward, the conservation, this doesn't approve the conservation subdivision, right, this is like step one, it's that, right? Hey, do we think this site has conservation value? And a conservation subdivision would be more beneficial than doing a standard um subdivision on the property. If that's so, then it allows us to move to step two and go to concept with you guys. Um, and look at that step, and then, okay, this is where we'd like to have the lots, this is the layout we'd like to see on the property. Does that make sense to you guys? If that does, then we go to preliminary, which is more detailed grading, if the other agencies evolve, and then finally final. But you know, that just, this is just first step in this, obviously if we move forward with this, not like we're, we know we're not guaranteed a. Conservation subdivision, if you don't like the the concept plan, it's not work out. Conservation subdivision. If you don't like the, the concept plan, it's not work out as well.
If they referred this to the, our town engineer. Your client would be responsible to pay for that review. Are you, is, is he prepared for that?
I, I would say so. I know, I know he's on Zoom. Thank you. Text me if he's, if he's got, uh, if he's got an issue with that.
Is he on Zoom?
He is, yes. Eric, Eric Moses.
He can speak.
Okay, okay.
Can you?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, it's Eric Moses. I'm the owner of the property or the managing member of the property. How are y'all? Uh, so yes, of course, if you guys require an engineer to look at the property and, and help clarify this, I would, I'd be willing to pay for that.
I just believe that this chairman, but I, I, other board members might have their own. Reasons is that we've never had a conservation, um, subdivision before. And never had to deal with it. And I would kind of like our engineer to look at it unless. You guys disagree or what?
I mean, I'd like to, maybe we can clarify what the expectations are from the engineering company and how many hours we expect them to come in as a consultant. Um, I, I, my understanding of the conservation is to do just that and conserve. All these lands of slopes and on the bigger lots rather than to sell them as four acre lots or three acre lots. And deal with seventeen to nineteen individual homeowners, uh, wishing to do things. In the back parts of their properties, add accessory structures or what have you, because they own the land and it's not conserved. Um, as far as the setbacks and the lines, everybody should also drive around the heights and just make sure they're aware of. What the, what the lot sizes and the proximities of all the houses are in the perimeter and the periphery houses. Um, we, we're not planning to approach what you see on, on Sagamore, uh, as you come around. Uh, Sagamore from Lake Tor, the lot size and the width size get tiny. Um, so, um, although we plan to hopefully, you know. Change, adjust some of the setbacks in order to concentrate this a little bit. I, I, I assure you and, and you'll see in our concept, we're not looking to approach the types of setbacks you see. Just up the hill, uh, adjacent properties right on Sagamore. So although we will be. Uh. Consolidating a little bit, it won't be to that type of consolidation you see up above. And Howard, to address you, uh, you were about the beach, uh, that many of the neighbors are deeded access to walk across. Uh, Camp Tech Road and cross our property on the beach to access the lake. And at this point, our expectation is to deed our new neighbors the same right to cross. The Camp Tech Road and across our property to access the lake, just like the rest of our neighbors are right now in their deeds. That's all I have. I'm, I'm here. If anybody has any more questions for, for us. I'm also a neighbor. I live on Camp Tech Road as well. So just saying.
So if we just, let's say we're looking at the conversation, conservation analysis, we like it, but. To go forward. I guess the next step would be the concept plan and that's where. No.
So a written report has to be done. And that written report has to. Has to determine what areas. This board believes have a significant conservation value. And should be protected from development by conservation easements for deed restrictions. So if you as a board feel comfortable making that determination and putting it in a written report, that's what you have to do as a staff.
Question, how would you collect, how would you as the writer of the report, collect this information from the other board members?
I guess I don't. At a meeting like this.
Sorry, anything from providing us from using? The report that he just generated?
Well, that's his report. And as I understand. If this makes sense, that the. Report that the planning board would be responsible for would come from the planning board. Is that correct?
Could I just throw one more thing in there? Um, I know that Karen mentioned this, but if. I encourage anyone here, if they would want to go down to the property, go down Millrose and. You know, walk down the driveway down to the property and, and you'll get a good idea of what we're trying to preserve. And it's really all the banks. All around the perimeter of the property that go up to the higher roads of houses that we'd really like to. Forcefully force ourselves to stay away from and everybody else to stay away from too. So it'd be, if you just, if you're not familiar with the topography there, it'd be a good idea to just take a peek.
Yeah, um, I'll jump here for a minute. Um, so you know, as part of, um, page one fourteen of the code, it has the conservation analysis section. Um, where it talks about what the applicant has to prepare. Um, and it says that we have to identify features of conservation value. So one was constrained land, right? Wetlands, water courses, water bodies, hundred year floodplains. And that report, we include the flood plan map or we're not in a flood plain. Um. While we have wetland type lands on the site, they are not technically jurisdictional or meet the town's definition of wetlands. Um. And then there are no other water bodies, uh, with a hundred foot buffer on the property. Um, the other one is slopes over fifteen percent, which are two thousand square feet or more and contiguous sloped area. That's where we have it highlighted on that map. So orange is fifteen to twenty-five, so that meets that threshold, but it's not. So steep that it's totally impossible. There is a very difficult to develop without toy flatting out, right? You can deal with fifteen, twenty percent slopes. And then red is twenty-five percent slopes and above. So those are your steepest sections on the site. So what we're kind of proposing is to really try to. Um, keep development off of those steeper twenty-five percent plus slopes. Um, and limit the amount of development and lot, um, impacts to those fifteen to twenty-five percent as well. Um. Active farmland, agricultural districts, this is non-active farmland and, um, in the report, we talk about. Um, agricultural lands and these are the types of soils that goes by. Um, they are considered prime. Farm type soils, however, due to the steep slopes on the site, it kind of negates the ability to really farm this site in that manner. Um, significant habitat. The project's not located in a significant natural community. Um, per DUC's, public trail corridors, there's no known existing public trail corridors on the site. Scenic view sheds, um, there are no. Federal or state or locally designated scenic byways there that were impacting, um. This is not like a hilltop where people are looking over. This is actually a bowl, um, inside so any, there's not really any scenic impacts in our opinion on that. Geological features, uh, New York State DUC keeps a record of. Known unique geological features, um, and none of them are located on this project site. Um, aquifers, so this site, part of it is located, what's called a principal aquifer. And that is. Um, defined by DUC as an aquifer known to be highly productive. Um, and it suggests that abundant water supply, but it's not intensively used. It's a water source by a major municipal system. At the present time. So, so principal aquifer is essentially like an aquifer that has the potential to be a large water source. It is not necessarily used as one, while a primary aquifer, which is not, is, um. Is used as, you know, as a, is used by municipality. So that's. The difference kind of between those two. There's also sole source aquifers, which means that's the only source for a community. This is not that as well. Um, historic places. This is not, this project site is not listed as a federal, state or locally registered historic place. Um, it does fall in archaeological buffer zone. So the architects are working with. Um, New York State Off the Park Recreation or Historic Places. Uh, to confirm that this project will not impact any archeological resource. That's part of the seeker and, and shipper process as well. Um, public parks, obviously it's located at Adrona Park, but, um, it's not a public park. Forest lands, this, this does have forest on there. It was recently logged off, uh, portions of it selectively logged. Um. So the proposed conservation value of those forest lands is minimal.
Hey Brandon, can I have you to hold on a second? I forgot to change the page.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
I know we're not on tape, but. On the map, the areas that are that. Um. I want to read this right. That are suitable for development. Is that portrayed in the white area?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we're rolling again.
Can I just jump in?
Yeah, sure.
Um, so he is going through what they submitted to you is each of the steps on one fourteen under conservation analysis. They've done that entire analysis and they've given it to you in a report. Um, the bottom of one fifteen, correct me if any of this is wrong, um, but. The conservation analysis should result in a composite map. Um, with the area suitable for development, which is the map that we're all looking at there. So your resolution to do that written report can be as simple as. We adopt the report that was given to us by the applicant. Um, if.
Is it possible to make, um, that agreement with certain conditions that the planning board might be consider?
So conditions aren't appropriate at this level. They would be appropriate when they bring an actual concept to you.
My only thought is. He's done the report. He's looked through all the areas of the basket. We agree with him, quote, before, and we disagree with him. Why not utilize that as our report and submit that?
Well, how do you know you agree with him?
It does also.
Keep in mind, that's from, keep in mind, that's from the sponsor of the underwriter and even though it's.
Disagree with any part of the report when we discuss that, agree with that. Why not just do that?
Yeah.
I do also just want to point out that it does allow, um, on page one sixteen, if you're doing a deeper review. And you end up disagreeing with anything that's been submitted, it does allow you to make that change at that time. So you're not definitely locked into what you decide here.
So I think like. Regardless of the, the particulars of the report, in general, everybody on the board probably agrees that. We do want to keep the character of the site, the wooded nature of it, we want to conserve it. In essentially giving the, the green light to the idea of the conservation subdivision approach. There's really no downside to that because the other option would be more likely to end in a drastic change in the character of the site. So. I don't think that by giving the, the green light for that approach. There, there's, there's no downside. There's no reason to, I think, to draw and, and have the, the town engineer take a look at it. At this stage, I think. That happens at the next stage, once we have a concept, that's when we pull in.
At the concept plan, right?
Yeah.
I would, I would, if anyone had disagrees with anything that's been presented to you in this report. You had it for a week. I distributed it a week early for you to look at. If any of you have disagreed with any points, you should bring that up now for discussion though.
One topic I would like to bring up, and I realize how hard the developer is working and they put a tremendous amount of energy and time and money and, and there is certain. Uh, the kind of development that the town needs. A concern I have that I'd like to ask the board to consider is the burden that this may put on the lake. Everybody here has followed for the last. Fifteen, eighteen years, the energy, the time and the money that we've been putting into invasive species, milfoil, erosion control. You've had the town make a huge investment, APA, volunteers from the Lake Association, waterfront property owners. And it's encouraging to see the progress that we've all made. In making the lake and the Lake Luzerne watershed. A healthier waterway today than it was ten years ago. It took a tremendous amount of work to get there. And a concern that I have is that if there are thirty houses that are prospectively being built. And people love kayaks and canoes, we conceivably could be adding twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty kayaks and canoes. And watercraft the lake.
But will they, will they be subject to the, um, washing of the boats like everyone else?
Well, right now the access, uh, the public, uh, the access point that would be using has no boat washing station.
Wait, can I interrupt Howard?
Way side, wait, let me finish, let me finish. Wayside Beach and Pierpont Beach both have water washing stations and we have been working, the Lake Association. Has been working very hard to make certain that people are educated to wash their boats. Um, does that exist at, at your beach?
Uh, first of all, let's, I'm glad you mentioned that Howard, that it is, uh, my beach. It is a private beach on the lake at this point. And let's look at that beach if you want to get into it. So that beach is. Everybody knows the, the, all the retaining walls, when I took ownership of that beach have already been. Decrepit and not maintained for the last twenty, thirty years. What I've done since I've owned that beach, Howard, is I put up safety construction, uh, fencing around those walls. To protect those who are spending time on a beach that they don't own or have deeded rights to spend time on. Their boats now are up in boat racks. Rather than having twenty, thirty boats strewn around on the lake, grown in on the beach. With unknown ownerships and decrepit trash underneath them, they're all now on racks that I had constructed on the beach. To make it safer and more appealing to those who utilize the beach that they don't own or have deeded rights to spend time. On that beach. There are two public beaches on the lake, which I, I, you know, at this point. If we can get this development underway, we can clean up that beach, put retaining balls, walls back on that beach. Make it safer and more appealing for everyone on the lake, but that takes money. And unfortunately, those who have deeded rights to cross that beach have spent the last fifty years. Not maintaining the road, not maintaining the beach, not maintaining the walls. I have done that for the last five years. Right? So at this point, it's not thirty Howard, houses Howard. It may be nineteen. Right? We've never proposed thirty houses, so that's an exaggeration. All right. Our land does not pour into the lake. It pours into a bowl that is deemed by Adronak Park to not have any continuity to the lake. I know some that are building new houses or proposing new houses on the shore of the lake. Right? Where there are not houses built now, which will directly influence the, uh, quality of the lake. From where these houses are being built. I would be much more concerned as a planning board about houses being built. Actually on the shore of the lake than ones being built a block away into a contained bowl. With essentially water that is stormwater management, right? So I am concerned about the lake as you are, Howard. And if we want to, you know, discuss that. On how our projects will affect the lake in a positive or a negative way, we definitely can have that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a comment on that. Um. It's not a private lake. It's a public lake. So it doesn't matter. I mean, we're looking at a subdivision. That's going to bring money into our town by taxes and people into our town. So people can park in the parking lot, they can park in the school and they can access the lake. So by putting in the subdivision, it's not going to increase the. Traffic at the lake per se. I mean, yes, it will eventually, but. It's not a private lake. So if they come here to visit, they can park in the parking lot and go to the lake for free. We're not receiving any money. If they live here, we're getting their money from taxes. We're getting their money through revenue through the stores in town. Right. And I'd rather have them here, living here, accessing the lake than entering it through a parking lot and using it publicly. So I know that it is, it's a beautiful lake. I use it all the time. I don't live on the lake. So I would love to have people living in our community that can enjoy the lake. All right. I don't know if I said that right, but.
I have an observation to share with the board, um, the, with regard to the aquifer. Our town's primary water source is about a thousand feet from Millrose Lane where it joins with Sagamore. Was that considered at all when we were talking about the aquifers currently?
Yeah, so that's, that's probably in that same, um, what I call principal aquifer, right? So it's a. Um, the DUC defines as a principal aquifer, right? So it has, it has adequate amount of water essentially there to be able to serve. Um, municipality or something, but it's not, it's not, um, not. It's not, um, not as intensively used as one that would be an aquifer, let's say Albany or, you know. Like, there is a small enough town where it doesn't qualify as a primary aquifer because of the number of people, I, I would assume is. How that is kind of, how they kind of come to that definition, because it seems to be the difference between primary and principal is. Principal aquifers, they're known to be highly productive, but they're not overly used while a primary is highly productive and used.
Was there any, um. Study or, or thought put into how developing this land could affect the town's main primary aquifer?
So I mean, it is over a thousand feet away, so we would, I mean, one is, we would be looking to use, um. Municipal water for the subdivision, right, sending water through there, so we're not going to be putting new wells in that are going to be drawing. Additional water out of the aquifer separate from the municipal system. Yes, it's a single family, so it will have septic systems. However, this is also a realty subdivision, it'd be over five lots, so. D O H would have to come on site and look at test bits, we have to, you know, go through everything with them to have them approve those septic systems. And these septics would be, would meet modern standards. Which I know, I mean, I know a lot of lake communities where there's a lot of, uh, septic systems that aren't quite up to. To modern standards in those areas, so I don't think, you know, we did look at that, we don't see any impact that this would have on that. On that principal aquifer, um, stormwater management as well would be contained on site, all the water that falls on the site right now. Goes down in the middle, going to continue to do that, we're not taking water off the site. It's all going to kind of go right down to that same, to that same low point essentially. And it would be managed with the same way that D E C requires, um. Speedy's permit they require for this project as well, so we'd have a speedy permit on this.
Now, our water is up here, right? All the streams and everything flow. South?
Well, our, our water is on the south side of Lake Luzerne, it's more by, um, where the town shed is.
So where they're developing is below it?
Above it. Above breeze from it. There's some A P A wetlands behind where the town shed is. That's where we have two pumps there that we pull. Our, that's our primary water source, we have a tower up here, I believe it gets pumped up to, to gravity feed. Other parts of town. But that's our principal water source over there. I think we just have to keep in mind that. At one point, the town's on this. So I think we got the care field stray. Far from, that's the town's plan for this area. And honestly, they're doing more than they're being asked to as conserving the environment in the area. That is required by our town zoning.
Agreed.
So it is a nice hybrid between preserving, you know, the rural nature of the town, protecting the environment. And developing the area like the town intended the area to develop. So, in my mind, it's a nice balance.
Can I ask a couple of questions? So, I reviewed the, your, um. Conservation analysis report, I thought it was pretty thorough, um, but just, I want to verify. Um, mentioned that you had a professional wetland scientist on January third of this year. To do the wetland investigation. Who, wha- wha- what company or?
So he works for our company, he's a, um, he's, um. That, I mean, that's a professional wetland scientist, essentially, yeah, he, this is what he does, he's a, he goes out, looks at sites, he works with A P A, he works with D E C. To delineate wetlands and works with them on any permitting that's required for those wetland delineations. So we, he did this wetland delineation and we actually sent. This out with a concept plan, the A P A showing those wetland areas to get their opinion and they came back and said it was not jurisdictional.
And then, uh. Environmental resource map for highlighted rare plants or animals as potential and partial parts of the site. I don't know if that is anything that you were part of the development.
Yes, and we'll, um. And we did find out what those were, and I think I forgot to bring that with me tonight. Yeah, yeah, and, and we can give you that information and that's, you know, with the seeker process as well. So with, anytime there's, you know, a significant natural or, you know, potential habitat for endangered species, we are required to get a sign off. Of what those species are from D E C, and they have to sign off on making sure that we're not going to impact those. Think one of them might have been bats, which is pretty common. And the mitigation for that would be limiting tree, tree clearing, especially during. Or outside of certain months, you're usually allowed to clear between November and March essentially. Those trees in order to mitigate, um, and prevent us from disturbing active nesting of those bats. So this project, if it was to move forward, we would have to. Get those sign off letters from them and also mitigate any, um, condition, any, um. Habitat or any other habitat that's in place.
And then it's. Uh, highlighted on the last page in the report, the archaeological buffer areas. What are some of the consequences of being in that buffer area?
Um, yeah, so we're in the buffer area, so I didn't, so that means you're within a certain. Mile radius of a known archaeological site, right, that's what puts you in the buffer area. So we reached out to the office of Parks Recreation or Historic Places, they did issue us a letter. Um, essentially saying, yes, you are the buffer, which you already knew. So they are working on hiring an archaeologist to go onto the site and do a phase one, phase B. Um, so before we move forward with seeker, we'd have to get their. Sign off essentially saying that there's no effect on there, then that, there's no findings. And if they did find something, obviously that would be like saying with the secret determination, that would be a change to what we present here. We would cha- have to change the analysis at that point.
It's saying that there's seven different lots, so are they planning on making this an association? And they're going to have lots that are part of the association, or are they going to get individual lots that they're going to be sold off, how's that, what is? The thought process?
Yeah, so the seven, the seven, the seven parcels now that make up the whole site, right, so we're essentially looking at a re-subdivision of the land.
So you're going to come back?
Yeah, there's seven lots now, so. The lot line would be, having the combination of lot line adjustments, the consolidations. That make up the new lots on the site, which would be different than what's there now. But there would be, they would want to do an H O A, so there would be the individual lots, which would be. Owned by the homeowner, which would be sold off. Um, to be built on, and then the remaining lands. Would be held under, um, a homeowner's association.
They're going to be paying for.
Yeah, with the people who belong to that association, you know, they have annual fee for maintenance, because they would like to do some kind of trail system through there. You know, kind of access.
And if the lots will be sold, that they're going to be part of a, a, a bigger.
Yeah, it'd be very part of an association that can maintain the roadway, um, the stormwater management areas.
The beach area.
The beach area potentially, yeah, all that, I mean, that's. Unless the town was willing to come in and take ownership of the roads, take ownership of the storm, it'd be very hard for them to maintain it without an H O A, so.
So this total. Everything, all conservation, it's going to be thirty-two point nine acres total.
About thirty-three acres, yeah. That might not include the beach parcel, I don't think we included that in that conservation analysis. Obviously that wouldn't be, I mean, they would have the access over that, but that's another point eight five acres.
And you're going to develop seventeen acres of it, approximately.
Um, what did we say here, I think we said.
I thought that was mentioned, I didn't see it, but I thought that's what you had said, but.
So I said the total. What are considered constrained land, so there's remaining ten acres are considered. Developable lands on the site, so the mo- the majority of the development is going to be pushed into those. Approximately ten acres, right, we're going to try to. You have thirty-three acres now on there, we're going to try to shrink that develop area down to approximately ten acres.
Over two thirds would be conserved.
Has to be forty percent. So you're, you're fine with that, forty percent have to be, has to be conserved.
Forty, yeah, 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 no, I mean, I don't think there's, there, there won't be any issue with doing that, but, yeah, yeah.
I see no. Reason not to.
Basically, what I'm going to say is we like the idea. And going forward, we still have to prove every little thing. Yeah, somebody has to make a motion.
Okay, so we're, we're making a motion to accept the. Conservation analysis report.
Yes, because we have to write the report, so yes.
Okay, I make the motion. To, for the planning board to accept the. E D P's conservation analysis report as our. For planning boards.
Conservation.
Conservation.
As your conservation findings.
As our conservation findings.
I'll second.
Roll call vote?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Howard?
I will say yes with conditions.
State your condition?
Well, no, you don't have to make your vote, your vote is yes.
Yes, with conditions. I'll get into them later. That's my response.
It's a yes.
Alright, hearing none, the motion's carried.
And that's smart.
Alright, thanks, we will pull together a concept plan and, uh.
Thank you all, good night.
Our engineer.
Yeah, no, honestly, yeah, definitely, I, I don't disagree with that. Thank you guys for your time tonight, I know, uh.
You guys presented something before the planning board earlier.
We did, yeah, yeah, and we've been working with them to try to come up with, we think is the best plan.
Actually, two others, there was two others. There was the one that went down, you know, and then there was the one with the tree happy.
Alright, thank you, have a good night.
We have the approval of the amendments from. April of last year. Has everybody had a chance to look at them? Chris did, uh. Email to everybody, so should have had a chance. Any additions or subtractions to that? I make a motion, we accept the minutes.
Second.
Roll call vote?
All favor, yes.
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 Hello, post? Hearing none, the motion's carried?
Okay, so. I'd like to change. There's three dates I'd like to change for the planning board, two of them. One has to do with Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving, uh, our fourth Wednesday is the day before Thanksgiving, so I'd like to make it the third Wednesday. Which. And then in December, when fourth Wednesday falls on Christmas Day. If you're going to be here, I'll be. I don't know if Karen will be here. Go back to dates here. No. And the last one is, is July, uh. The town has concerts every Wednesday in July, they went up really big last year. We changed it last year and I'd like to move that Wednesday, it's only one Wednesday meeting. Which would be the twenty-fourth. I'd like to change it to Tuesday, the twenty-third. Fourth Tuesday of July. So that'd be July twenty-third instead of July twenty-fourth.
Fourth Tuesday, sorry.
Yeah, I know, but on board's the third. And then November meeting will be. November twentieth. Instead of the twenty-seventh, and December meeting of December eighteenth instead of December twenty-fifth. Yeah, she'll send those.
November, I got July.
July's twenty-third. November twentieth and December eighteenth. Unless you want to come on December twenty-fifth.
And the cutoffs are the week before at noon. So everyone is clear.
So I make a motion? We have a second.
Okay, roll call vote?
Uh, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Pos.
Hearing none, the motion's carried?
Correct. That's my old new business, anybody else have anything?
Going back to the, the. Previous, the conservation analysis, do we need to do anything about this further action that's on the list or is that covered?
I think they bring the concept plan now and then we, at that point. When he, before he left, I said, then we have the right to get our, well, not the right, but we could do it, get our engineer to write.
Yeah, and I think that's why that makes sense to.
Your report that is required is going to be the cover sheet that I gave you tonight, Mark accepted. With any further action, motion to accept the E D P conservation analysis. Report as our conservation findings, all voted yes, this is required under. As is required under Article Ten, page one sixteen, so this becomes your report, this page becomes your report on it.
Right.
And I'm going to have John sign it.
But it doesn't mean anything, doesn't put us anything, I mean, nothing's been done, we just accept.
Right.
I mean, I like the concept.
They call for the town engineer at the next phase?
What's that?
Maybe, that we'll know then.
Right, if there's any questions.
Right.
And when we bring in the town engineer, they have to foot the bill for?
Yes.
Absolutely. Any other new or old business? Going once. Make a motion, we adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Yes, opposed. Motion carried.
If anyone else has gotten any training, please make sure you provide me with something so that I can put it in my file for the year.